All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's six thirty on the dot. We're gonna go and get started. Tonight, with tonight's City Mulberry City Council meeting for August fourteenth, twenty twenty five. We're gonna start with an invocation of Pledge of Allegiance. Our Mayor Pretend Michael Rudnick's gonna lead us, so if you could start by, if you're able to stand for a invocation.
Go bow your heads. You're God. Thank you for bringing us all together tonight for this meeting. We hope to bring Mulberry to the best place possible. Please allow us to take the best decisions possible for the citizens of Mulberry. Please allow everyone here to be safe, and thank you very much for us all being able to be together here in a healthy sight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Tim. All right, so the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna go ahead and call the roll. As we do, we're gonna call it in the order of districts. If you can announce present, if you are here. So we'll start with District One, Councilman Tim Sullivan.
Present.
District Two, that's me, Michael Coker. I am here. District Three, Councilman Kyle Shields.
Present.
District Four, our Mayor Pretend Michael Rudnick.
Present.
And then District Five, Councilman Doug Ingram. All right, Madam Clerk, if you could notate that all five council members are present this evening. All right, ladies and gentlemen, as I stated before, we have a couple copies of the agenda on there. We've got a busy night tonight. We're also gonna have some public comments. If you'd like to give a public comment, we do have a pad of paper up there. We just ask that you sign your name for the record. That's all I have for this evening. Do any of the other council like to make an opening comment? Okay, go ahead.
I just wanna say, over the last twenty, thirty days, we've had a couple grand openings. In the city, some of the councils were able to attend different ones. A lot of bowls, which is a acai bowl smoothie yogurt place, opened up in the Wildling Shopping Center. Food's excellent, very, very good. I got, had a chance to meet the owners. Great folks, they live here in Mulberry. Please go support them. And then L and L Hawaiian Barbecue in the same shopping center opened up just maybe a week later. Got a chance to sample their food, very good, very different, obviously. Met those owners, great people, also live in Mulberry, in District Three, I believe. So two new restaurants in Mulberry, two great grand openings, so please, please go visit them. They are small businesses, they are local businesses, those will support families here in Mulberry. I hosted a meet and greet here, the same day as the L and L barbecue opening. I had a few for ten, so thank you to those that were able to attend. I will continue to do those periodically, maybe every other month or so, just for an hour and a half on a weekend day, if you come, ask questions, open forum, whatever you wanna talk about. And then lastly, last night, the mayor and myself and our city manager had a chance to attend GWMA, which is the Gwinnett Municipal Association Meeting in Lawrenceville. Cooper Renwick renovated the library. And if you haven't had a chance to go there, it's a great experience. Absolutely wonderful history in the building. It's in the city of Lawrenceville, right next door to their city hall. But it's, it was the only school in Gwinnett County where an African American could get a high school diploma, up until nineteen sixty.
Sixty-eight, eight.
Sixty-eight.
Six years.
Until integration. And they were, they were gonna tear the school down five years ago, six years ago. But they instead made it into a public library for Gwinnett County with a tremendous amount of history. They utilized the floor from the gymnasium as the floor in the museum portion, really, really cool. You can spend a lot of time just in the, in the museum portion. And then, of course, there's an entire library attached to it, so. And then we were able to be accepted into Gwinnett Municipal Association last night. So Mulberry is officially part of Gwinnett Municipal, Municipal Association. They altered their logo, they were able to fit another city on their logo, which is great, so we were welcomed with open arms, so that's all my announcements.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend. Any other council announcements?
I have one quick announcement. We've had, and I see a couple people in the omnis today, we've gotten some really great feedback from citizens in Mulberry, and that's critically important for us. So I just encourage anybody in here that you have ideas about Mulberry, as you look at the comprehensive plan, if you have opinions on the direction that the city should be going in, or even opinions about how we're doing, you can reach out to each of us individually. And I also believe that there's some survey mechanisms going out through different vehicles, social media, et cetera. So definitely, you know, voice your opinion, we'd love to hear how we're doing, and also make sure we're steering in the right direction.
Yeah, and for District Three, Greater Hamilton Mill Area, the Hometown Herald, which is a publication that goes up to the twenty-two hundred Hamilton Mill, they're nice enough to give us a half page for every month. So what we're gonna do is updates on the city, so those individuals that don't watch any of the meetings, they can go ahead and open up the magazine, it'll be right there for them, and I'm just gonna give little brief updates on everything that's going on. I'm also talking to Neighbors Magazine, which is going outside of Hamilton Mill, to see if they'll do the same thing, so I'm working on that right now.
All right, anything else? I will second what Mayor Pretend said. We're very lucky to have been invited into the Gwinnett Municipal Association. They are a division of the Georgia Municipal Association, which is basically, for those of you that don't know, a collection of all the cities in Georgia. We work together, we help each other out, and we kind of are, it's a cooperation effort. So we're very lucky to be a part of that as well. All right, that'll conclude the council's opening comments. Does the interim city manager have any opening comments?
I do. I have a lot of thank yous, right? So first, I wanna say thank you to our staff, because the things that we have had to go through to get to this point have been phenomenal. And I'm really grateful for all of you for, you know, bearing through, getting everything organized, getting it together, making sure that we can provide the best services for the city. The second thank you I want to say is to the Gwinnett Municipal Association as a whole. Working through this process has been great with them, and, you know, all the cities have been very welcoming, and getting us involved, and making sure that we're up to date. And then the last thing I wanna thank is, you know, there's a lot of things going on between us and Gwinnett County as a whole, but at staff level, between us, Gwinnett PD, Gwinnett Fire, we met with the Marshal's Office last week, and the Water and Sewer Department, that, the communication between all of us has been absolutely phenomenal. And we've done a complete one eighty from where we were a couple months ago. So I just wanna make sure that publicly thank them for, you know, all their support as we continue to move forward, the things that we want to see, and our citizens wanna see inside the city.
Awesome. All right, thank you. All right, that'll bring us to item H, which is consideration of tonight's meeting agenda. Is there any amendments, changes, or additions to tonight's meeting agenda? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and make a motion to adopt the meeting agenda for August fourteenth, twenty twenty five, for the City of Mulberry's regular city council meeting. Do I have a second?
My second.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend. Do I have any, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? By a vote of five, tonight's meeting agenda is hereby adopted. All right, that'll bring us to item I, which is consideration of the July tenth, twenty twenty five minutes. Has every council member had a sufficient amount of time to review those minutes, and are there any amendments that need to be made?
I have two amendments.
Okay, thank you, councilman. You can proceed.
So the amendment I would have, and I may have to touch base with Madam Clerk on this, on the July tenth minutes, so item M-A, so action items, A item. There was just a notation there on the fire marshal services that I indicated I'd like to have on the record around the notation that some of those services from a file, fire perspective, are currently required because of our inability to reach agreement with Gwinnett County. Is that right, Mr. Tim? Have we had indicated that? I just didn't see it on the record, so I don't know.
I believe you did indicate that.
So can we summarize it in a brief fashion with that? So that would be one edit. And then the second edit was on item M-G regarding the fiscal year budget. I'd also made a comment there around, just, I think I can summarize it simply, which is, I just indicated that there was a significant allocation of budget to legal fees for the ongoing litigation in Gwinnett County. So I'd just like to make sure that that's notated in the record. That's it for me. Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Ingram, let me make sure I've got those correct. So under action item M-A, the amendment would be that, what was your exact wording?
Yeah, I think the wording would be, and I'm kinda on the flyer, so I'll try to make it, kinda make it as short as I can. You can say, I think what we can say is Councilman Ingram notated, or sorry, Councilman Ingram discussed with city attorney the necessity for fire marshal services was due to an inability to reach agreement with Gwinnett County. Is that a fair approximation? So that would be the notate, notation there, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, did you get that? May I say it one more time for her? Councilman Ingram discussed with the city attorney, they need for...
The necessity for fire marshal services was due to the inability for Gwinnett County, for us to reach agreement with Gwinnett County. I don't, and again, I don't wanna, you know, be too onerous here, I just think that there are things in our budget, additional expense items, because of this ongoing thing, and I think it's important that this is part of the record.
Absolutely. Okay, so that's action item M-A, and then you also had another amendment to item G.
Item G, yeah.
It's, I believe that, I wrote that down, is that Councilman Ingram's address, or notated that there was a significant allocation of funds for legal expenses?
Due to ongoing litigation with Gwinnett County.
Correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Very fair.
And certainly, we hope that that is a thing of the past and the very near future, but when these were written...
Well, and I do wanna say, sir, that a lot of that sparked some of the conversation that we had with the Fire Marshal's Office, and it started to move in the right direction.
Awesome.
So, you know, it's, it's not contradictory to either or. And I'm grateful for their willingness to come to the table, but if it wasn't for that last meeting and those comments, then I don't even think we would've gotten to the table.
Okay. Okay, any other amendments proposed apart from those two from the council? All right, Councilman Ingram, since you propose those, I will let you make the motion first. Let's do the motion first to amend the, the meeting minutes from July tenth, twenty twenty five, as presented. I'll let you make the motion, and then we'll, we'll adopt the, the minutes as a whole, as amended, so I'll let you make that first.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, what am I making a motion on?
Um, I just, if you just...
As amended.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Well, you have to do the amendments first, so just make a, make a motion, gotta call a vote on the amendments, and then we gotta call a vote on the whole thing as amended. So I'll let you make the motion for the amendments.
Gotcha. So I would like to make a motion for the amendment to draft minutes dated July tenth. Items M is in Mike, A is in Alpha amendment, do I need to restate the words again?
I think you can just state as stated, Madam Clerk.
As stated to Madam Clerk. And then I'd also like to make an amendment to our draft minutes, July tenth, in areas M, as in Mike, G is in Golf, as stated to Madam Clerk.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, the amendment carries. Then at this time, I will make a motion to adopt the Mulberry City Council regular draft meeting minutes as, for July the tenth, twenty twenty five, as amended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Pretend. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, the city council meeting minutes for July the tenth, twenty twenty five, as amended, are hereby adopted. All right, that brings us, as we continue to move along, to action item J, consideration of the July twelfth, twenty twenty five special called meeting minutes. Has the council had sufficient time to review those, and are there any proposed amendments to the July the twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes?
None permitted.
All right, hearing none, I will make the motion to adopt the Mulberry City Council special called meeting minutes for July the twelfth, twenty twenty five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ingram. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, the Mulberry City Council special called meeting minutes from July the twelfth, twenty twenty five are hereby adopted as presented. All right, that brings us to the public comments section. As I stated, we have a pad of paper up there. If you'd like to give a public comment, now is the time. I will tell you, we limit public comments to two minutes, and the council cannot and will not respond to the comment at this time, but we will sit and listen. So is there anyone here that would like to give a public comment this evening? You would? All right, sir, you can take a podium. Just do, do us a favor, if you could sign your name on that yellow legal pad right there. And Madam Clerk's gonna keep the time. If you could just state your name and your address, and if you know what district you live in as well, that would be great, for the record.
I'm Danny Hortman. I live at thirty-four sixty-eight Bay Road, DeCulio, Georgia. I'm eighty-four years old. And I have, tonight, want to protest the annex me into your city. I was not asked, I was not notified that I was in it, I heard it through the grapevine. And I think y'all violated my constitution by not giving me an opportunity to say yes or no. Citizen, the right to vote on such a matter. What could constitutional right give you all to just, just to annex a person's property into a city without giving them permission? For the land, the landowner had no problem, no, no say-so in what you do. I did not vote, I was not in the original. And, you know, it's, you know, we, we live in a free country, we live in the United States of America, not communist country, where they just come in and take what they want. That's what I feel like y'all did. You just come in and took what you wanted from me. I don't wanna be in the city. I don't want no HOA telling me I can cut my grass, can't cut my grass after seven o'clock, no. That kinda stuff, I'm not for. I know, and Gwinnett County furnishes me with everything that I need. And I don't think y'all, I just think y'all ramrodded, ramrodded me into the city that I'm not wanting to be in. I don't like for y'all just to annex me back out of it. Because you, my daughter had a house right next door. You didn't get that. You got my property, and property from there down to the creek. I just don't understand, well, y'all are selfish people, because you're not looking after the people in the county or in the city. I didn't wanna be in the city to start with. I don't, I got enough rules and regulations through Gwinnett County. I don't need any more through Mulberry City. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, is there anyone else that'd like to give a public comment?
Come on.
Again, if you don't mind, sir, if you could just write your name, and then state your name, your address, and if you know the district you live in, for the record.
Thank you so much. My name is Ozembe. English is my second language. I'm French speaking, but I'm an American citizen. I live in thirty-one seventy-five Packet Middle Road, Bford, Georgia. I'm just confused that area, first of all. I don't know if I'm Bford or we somewhere, because when we got a, like, thing to do, we go to seat, seat all of Bford. They told us your address is knowing Bford. But when I get this letter, I come back. I supposed to be coming with my daughter to translate very well, so I'm gonna do the best I can. The Gwinnett County, they coming with the project to do sidewalk in Packet Middle Road. Like, my brother finished here, Gwinnett County imposed the, the people, the staff, I know, I want the sidewalk. But the feet, Gwinnett, he was nearing five feet to make the sidewalk. But from the road to my property line is nineteen feet. But Gwinnett went to twenty-three. They give the neighbor money, and they propose me money. Thirty, thirty-five hundred, I refused. I did not sign in the paper, any paper. I was in the hospital to ACU for two months. Gwinnett, he just carried my man and put it the sidewalk. All of these people, the neighbor, I asking them if they know how many feet Gwinnett gonna take it. They say, no, they told us they gonna just put the sidewalk in the front. We didn't know, that twenty-three feet is like the HGV space from the road to in the property. So they take advantage, I was waiting to go to court. I was waiting, they gonna send me the letter, because I refuse to sign anything. I start getting the call for the people, why, why you don't want to, they say, no, I don't want, it's not, I don't want the project. It's good to have a sidewalk in, but how many feet Gwinnett want to take? He did not explain that. The place I'm in, I'm knowing subdivision, I'm in the road, we got five houses. For me, that project is the same level from the first house, they take the feet like it's supposed to be. Between nineteen feet, when you take five minus five, you got fourteen feet for Gwinnett. First house, they do the same thing, they take nineteen feet, come in my house, they take twenty-two. And I was not there, I was in the hospital for two months, in Gwinnett Hospital for the annual Richmond AAA. And they coming, they already give, and with my consent, I didn't sign any paper, I didn't get any dollars from Gwinnett County. My wife, my wife tell them, he's in the hospital. And they to wait on me, who they called to call me to go, to explain to them why I have a problem with the sidewalk. The problem was, the feet, they taking to my front yard, it's too much. I asked the guy coming with the project, if that, you guys need to, to make the road to becoming big, they say, no. Just, we need to just the sidewalk. Sidewalk, we got it from the road to the, the end of the road, nineteen feet, just is the law from Gwinnett. Why you can't taking nineteen feet to take your five?
Sir, it's been, it's been the two minutes that's allotted for the time, but what, what I would like to do, right, is I can kinda work with you on the situation. We don't have a transportation department. And they handle the sidewalks, but what I wanna do is, Joy has one of my cards, we can talk about that, and we can discuss it, and we'll see what we can do to kinda help you from the city side by having this discussion with Gwinnett.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, sir.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, if you don't mind, let us know when it hits the two minutes, okay? Thank you. All right, does anyone else wanna give a public comment? All right, hearing none, I will close the public comments section for this evening. That brings us to item L, our second read of a couple ordinances. The first one is L-A ordinance, twenty twenty-five zero seven one forty-six. Second read of an ordinance in the City of Mulberry, Georgia, to establish franchise fee agreements between Atlanta Gaslight Company and City of Mulberry, Georgia. All right, so the attorney, I'll let you present that.
Just very briefly, that's what we presented last time. This is the franchise fee. We have some Atlanta Gaslight lines within the city, and the, and the Atlanta Gaslight has provided us with the same franchise that they have within every other city. So this is an ordinance, only because Atlanta Gaslight likes ordinances, and, you know, rather than rewrite the world for Atlanta Gaslight, they're gonna pay us just like everybody else, so I suggest that you wish to get franchise fees that you would adopt the ordinance.
Are there any questions from the city council for the city attorney on this ordinance?
I have one quick one. Is section six excavation. I had something happen in, in our district. It was not related to Atlanta Gaslight, it was related, if you forget. But I'm just curious if that language regarding, so we have properties, some of those properties are nicely landscaped, they got, you know, beautiful flower gardens and everything. Sometimes, in these scenarios, I have to do some pretty, you know, significant excavation. Do you think the language is significant enough in here to protect the property rights of the citizens that may have pipeline running through? In terms, because I noticed the language says, will replace to its former condition is nearly as practical. So that seems like that's a fairly wide area of navigation.
I believe that they'll do it as nearly as practical. The, here's, here's the thing. It's, we, they, we're talking about outright away.
Sure.
And, and they, they, they need to replace it, and they need to remediate it to the extent that they can, and I believe that they will do that.
And you feel like the language here is sufficient enough, should we find ourselves, because certainly we wanna make sure we've got nicely landscaped things in the city and everything else, and if...
I say asterisk, and here's the reality, right? Every situation is different, so to address your statement, the answer is yes.
Okay.
But it's a case-by-case basis, depending on what happens as a form of utility inside the...
Fair enough. Just curious, what are your thoughts on that? Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right, any other questions from the council? All right, at this time, I'm intrigued by the...
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five zero seven one forty-six, as presented.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, we got a little bit of a discrepancy. On the, on the agenda, it's listed as twenty twenty-five zero seven one forty-six. On the ordinance itself, it's twenty twenty-five zero six one forty-six. What's the correct numbering of that ordinance? I guess the question was, was the first read, it looks like the first read was in July, so I guess it's zero seven. I'll just amend the document, but just wanna make sure. It's zero six one forty-six from the ordinance. Okay.
It's, that's how it's in the ordinance, but it was read first in July.
So what, for classification purposes, what do we wanna go with?
Twenty twenty-five dash zero seven dash one forty-six.
So zero seven, okay. Mayor Pretend, can you make your motion again with it being zero seven one forty-six?
I did see zero seven.
Oh, look at that, okay, all right. Then we have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Councilman Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, ordinance... All right, by a vote of five, ordinance twenty twenty-five zero seven one forty-six is hereby adopted. Bear with me real quick while I make these changes. All right, ordinance twenty twenty-five zero seven one forty-six is hereby adopted. All right, that brings us to the second read of ordinance twenty twenty-five zero seven one forty-seven. Second read of the ordinance in the city of Mulberry, Georgia, to adopt hotel motel excise taxes. Turn that over to Ms. McQuade.
Yeah, good evening, great to be here tonight. This is the second read of the hotel motel tax exercise or excess tax ordinance. It was before you previously, but I just put some information up there to remind you of its purpose. Generate revenues, support tourism, development and other public purposes. It's a five percent tax, which is in line with the state of Georgia's state level regulations. It will be effective for us October first, if you choose to approve it tonight. And that is in line with their requirements as far as when it can go into effect. And then this was first read in July on the ten.
Any questions for Ms. McQuade on the ordinance twenty twenty-five zero seven one forty-seven?
I have a question. The question I have for Ms. McQuade is on the, so understand the structure, we've talked about it already. There was something that I guess I missed, I don't know if it was oversight on my part or what. I'm just curious, in section seven dot six D, item D, where it talks about the administrative fee? Is that common?
I would imagine it is, yeah.
So it's five less three, is that right? I guess so, if I may, can I read, are you familiar with the language on that already? Okay. So the way I read that, it seems like we have a lodging tax with more than fifty percent of it going back to the lodging provider. Is that right?
No.
That's not right, okay.
That's not correct. Five percent of the lodging fee goes to, towards the city in the form of the hotel motel tax.
So if I can read the language in here, because it's not clear to me. So section seven dot six D, lodging providers may retain three percent of taxes collected as an administrative fee. But only if the amount due is not delinquent at the time of payment, so.
Is that three percent of the five percent?
Yes. If you're getting a hundred dollars, they get to keep three. Okay, then I think we need to maybe.
So they give us a hundred dollars in tax revenue.
They keep three of those.
So, so it's three percent of the five percent.
Yes, so it's not, it's not, it's not, they collect five and they get to keep three of it. They get a three percent administrative fee over five.
So they're, they're keeping three percent of the five.
That's sufficiently clear. Okay, got it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, because it does say three percent of taxes collected.
So technically, it's just for clarification purposes, it's three percent to a hundred percent, which is the five percent.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does. I'm just, the language still is, is kind of a little, I don't know, one night if, if that's a common piece of language in other municipalities, are they okay with it? Okay, well, I, the, the language could be a little clearer on that, I think. Can we change that? Can I make a motion to just change that or no? Is that recommended or no?
I mean, it's the language that was drafted as ordinance, Albert Cardiff and Jamie.
So let me ask, actually, let me ask a question differently before I ask if we should change it. Are you comfortable with language? Fair enough, got it, thank you. If we, it's fine, it's the same, it's the same language everybody else has. Okay, understood, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, then at this time, I'll entertain a motion regarding ordinance twenty twenty-five zero seven one forty-seven.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five zero seven one forty-seven.
All right, thank you, Mayor Proton, do I have a second? All right, thank you, Councilman Shields, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, ordinance twenty twenty-five zero seven one forty-seven is hereby adopted as presented. All right, that flips us over to page two of our agenda, action items M. First one is consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight forty-five, authorizing the mayor to open a city bank account with Truist. All right, Ian can present this one.
I got it. I got it, put it on the spot. Put it on the spot, we're all together. So we've been going through the process of, you know, diversifying the income, the, the fees that we have and everything else. We're looking at opening up a bank account here at Truist and then using that to open up a lot of credit, as far as credit cards and things of that nature. Because we're so new, Truist regulations say that in order for us to get a credit card through them, that we would have to deposit money and open up a bank account. And then we can get city credit cards for that. So that is the purpose of opening up this account, is to deposit the minimum amount that they require for us to open up and obtain credit cards.
Any questions for the city manager on this?
Yeah, what's the minimum?
Uh, it's a hundred thousand.
Any other questions?
Is that interest bearing? Hundred thousand, is it in some kind of interest bearing account with them?
Uh, I could, I'll double check. I'd get, I'd get you that answer. The main purpose of this is to open up the account so that we can have credit cards, right? Because the, the easiest way for us to continue to do transactions or do statements would be if we were to have credit cards that the city could use for purchases. So if anything were to happen, we can double check those statements against our general ledgers and make sure that everything balances out a little bit, you know, similar to what we've already done.
I do, we'll check the money, we should get a couple percent.
How does we pick Truist up, just out of curiosity?
We went through rates and what I can't remember off the top of my head right now is what the number is, but we balance it off what we would get as far as interest bearing, interest returns. Truist was the best bank once we looked at all banks that are within the city limits. And so that's how we determine that.
Any other questions? All right, then at this time, I will make a motion, well, I, I guess I'm the one opening accounts, so I should, can someone else make that motion for me?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight dash forty-five, authorizing the mayor to open a city bank account with Truist.
All right, thank you, Mayor Proton, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Sullivan, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight forty-five, authorizing the mayor to open an account with Truist Bank is hereby adopted. All right, that brings us to item B, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight forty-six, authorizing mayor to open bank account for tree money, tree bank money compensation fee and First American Banking Trust.
Yes, so inside our ordinance is a requirement that, you know, we have a certain number of open space as well as tree recompense, which are, or tree replacement for any development that were to come in and take down. It has to be rebalanced from a landscape standpoint for the number of inches that is lost in, you know, lawn vegetation, right? If a development were to come in and say that, hey, we can't replace that number of inches of trees, there is the option for them to pay into a open space tree bank fund to balance out what that difference is. We are now in conversations with a developer because of that. And because of that situation, we need to go ahead and establish the ability to open up the account so that that option actually is available for them to deposit to us that we can put it to an account. This is restricted fund that can only go to the replanting of trees somewhere within the city limits or the purchase of something that can be open space and used as city property for everyone inside the city.
Any questions for the city manager? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five oh eight dash forty-six to establish a tree bank account for the savings of money to be spent on trees and on green space.
And authorizing the mayor to open that account.
And letting the mayor, authorizing the mayor to open that account.
Thank you, Councilman Sullivan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor? All opposed? All right, resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight forty-six, authorizing the mayor to open a tree account is, at First American Bank is hereby adopted. All right, moving along, item C, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight forty-seven, amending the naming of the open records officer and alternate.
This one's very simple. Our open records officer is our city clerk. The alternative name on there is someone who is not an employee of the city any longer, so we need to replace that with an employee of the city. And the directive operations, Kelly Cash, we're replacing that.
Awesome, any questions? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight forty-seven, which will replace the name of the open records custodian and the alternate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ingram, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor? All opposed? All right, resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight forty-seven is hereby adopted. All right, that brings us to resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight forty-eight, amending the planning and development fee schedule.
This is going to be a simple amendment to the fee schedule. We are adding a right of way permitting fee so that it is separate than the land disturbance permitting fee. It's really clear what it is. It's at a hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then we will also be including the tree bank density recompense. And that will be five hundred dollars per density unit. So those are just amending the fee schedule to.
Any questions for Ms. McQuade?
Did you care density unit, is that like per inch per foot?
It's, it's, so it's, it's different than like D V H that you might be used to or something that way. So it's looking at the overall density of the site and there's a minimum threshold that they have to meet of the density of like tree.
I want to be clear, the part, this is just for the fee schedule because again, this was already inside the ordinance. And so we're just making sure the fee schedule is reflected of, reflects what's already assessed inside the ordinance.
All right, then I will make a motion to adopt, oh, I'm sorry, any other questions? All right, hearing none, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight forty-eight, amendment to the planning and development fee schedule. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, resolution twenty twenty-five zero eight forty-eight, amending the fee schedule is hereby adopted. All right, that brings us to item E, consideration of the city hall lease.
Yeah, so as you all and everyone else in here can see, we've already outrun the space. And so we have found a new location, it's not far, it's literally across the street. And this lease will work with, this lease to be signed is for us to start moving operations over there, once you all execute it. And then full of the operation within the month of October in the new space.
Can you talk about just briefly the size difference between that space versus this one?
Almost triple.
Really? How big is the other one, the new one?
I mean, I just threw out triple because it's significantly larger, right? But it's, it's.
Significantly bigger.
Yeah, it's, it's fifteen hundred square feet. We're looking at an additional thirteen hundred square feet to go with the space as well. All the things that we've been talking about as far as renovating this space, even with the renovations that we're planning on doing here, the cost jump between that and this is, is, I mean, we would not, it would not be good to spend the dollars to renovate the space that we knew we would outgrow, but we can grow into this space if we would go ahead and move forward with this new lease.
And the new space is cheaper than we're currently paying for this space.
Same price.
On the square foot.
For more square footage.
For more square footage, yeah.
Well then, just, didn't, didn't our current lease escalate to like eleven grand?
So the way that this, this structure was set up, right, over the course of this year, the payments here would balloon to a certain amount. The space that we're moving into is for the same amount with again, for more square footage.
Right, and locked down for a year.
Yes.
Cool.
Any other questions for the city manager?
I just have, can you, what's the rentable square feet again, on the first phase, what this lease says?
Around fifteen hundred square feet.
Yes, okay. That's great, that's great, it's a great deal. I just want to make sure that the lease is accurately reflecting that.
Okay.
Are we sure that that's the number?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And the reason, I think the reason is asking that our document says forty-nine thirty-five, yeah.
I'm just, if it's fifty-nine, you know what I mean, I just wanted to, I mean, if we're going to ratify it, we should just ratify it with the right number, right?
Ratify, I, I request that you ratify what's inside the lease.
Okay.
Any other questions for the city manager? Hearing none, I will make a motion to adopt the office lease agreement between the Pickron Family LLC and the city of Mulberry, Georgia, authorizing the lease of the space directly across the street on Karen Trace. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Thank you, Councilman Sullivan, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor? All opposed?
Councilman Ingram, I didn't see your vote, I'm sorry. Before you finalize on this, wouldn't it make better sense for me just to make a motion to indicate that appropriate square footage on the ordinance?
You can certainly make a motion, sure, that's your right, as a councilman, you can do that.
So I'd like to make a motion before, if you guys don't mind. I'd like to make a motion regarding the office lease that we're about to ratify for the Pickron Family LLC in the city of Mulberry. Just to indicate on one dot zero one D, fifty-nine hundred square feet as the rentable square footage.
Okay. So the rentable square footage as fifty-nine hundred?
Fifty-nine hundred.
Okay. I, I certainly understand your concern. I guess my question to the city manager is, what is the reason for the discrepancy, how does it have a motion on the table?
Discrepancy is.
Well, let me, let me do this, we have a motion on the table for the amendment, do I have a second for that amendment?
Second.
Okay, we have a second on the, so now we'll discuss it. What was the reason for the discrepancy?
Discrepancy was in my own fault, not the contract.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, so it was, it was a mistake, so the correct square footage is forty-nine thirty-five?
It's inside, it's, it's what's inside of the contract.
Yeah. In fairness, I think, not to defend the city manager, I think there is a common area that's downstairs. The number might have included that he's referencing, might have included the common area that's down there. The actual rentable square footage, I think, is forty-nine thirty-five.
And just to be clear, I'm not, again, I'm not trying, just having some experience with commercial leases. We get into commercial lease and we don't have the number right, that's kind of a material thing, particularly if we're signing for thirty-six months.
Sure, I understand, I understand.
You know, I mean, I just want to make sure we have the right path forward. So if it's fifty-nine hundred, it's fifty-nine hundred. If we have a contract that this is, that is not material, I, you know, I don't care, I just think it needs to reflect the right number, that's all.
So, so we have a motion, we have a second on the table, so I will call, call a vote on, well, any other discussion on the amendment?
Can Councilman Ingram withdraw a motion with his own reasons?
He could.
He could, okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to withdraw a motion.
Okay, the motion has been withdrawn, okay. So any other, so then, so, I'm sorry, I've lost track. I made the motion to adopt, that was, that was seconded, correct? And then we had an amendment, so do I need to remake my motion again? Okay.
You're, you're at the point that you have a motion, a second, any discussion? You go back after the Truist amendment, you're back to any discussion.
Okay, so we're back to any other discussion about the office lease agreement between Pickron Family LLC and the city of Mulberry, Georgia. All right, hearing done, I will call a vote, all in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, the office lease agreement between the Pickron Family LLC and the city of Mulberry, Georgia is hereby adopted. Okay, that brings us to action item F, consideration of letter to receive the equipment transfer. City manager, you want to talk about this one?
There is another municipality who's been gracious enough to be willing to transfer some equipment to us in form of a donation. We would like for you all to approve the transfer of this equipment so that we can send this letter over to them, so that we can work on what the, you know, the timing of every, all the equipment we transfer over.
Any questions for the city manager on this item?
One quick question, will we create some sort of I G A between the two cities on that?
This is just a.
This is a quick transaction.
If Lawrenceville had decided that they can send trucks to us, they could have done it. We're just making, we're making the requests, I don't know, put it in front of the council and they'll look at it.
If we were purchasing, would we do I G A?
No.
No.
So any other questions? At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the letter to receive an equipment transfer as presented.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, hearing done, I'll call a vote, all in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, the, it's approved that this letter will be transmitted to the equipment transfer. All right, that brings us to action item G, consideration of chatcom proposal.
So we have had one decision. So we have had one discussion with Chatcom. They have wanted to talk to us about a master plan for communications, what that would look like before you go move towards a certified martial service for code enforcement. And this proposal is just to look at what communications look like, what they could provide if, or what a master plan for some internal dispatch for code enforcement, martial service would look like. So this is just a proposal that we're asking you all to approve to start preparing for a master plan for a system of that nature.
Is this locking us in IPX or is this?
This is just a proposal to design a master plan.
Okay, okay, so we're like a study. Not, not a hey, we're gonna use you.
Yes.
Any other questions for the city manager on the proposal? All right, hearing done, I will entertain a motion.
I can make a motion, sorry. I'll make a motion for the city, does the mayor have to sign it or no?
We will, but where, if, the form of the motion would be, make a motion to direct the city attorney to prepare a contract in accordance with the proposal and authorize the mayor to sign that contract on a receipt of it back from the, from Chat, from IXP.
Chat, yeah, I think so.
Chat.
Is it Chatcom slash IXP or what's the?
Yeah, it'll be an app, it'll be IXP.
IXP, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city attorney to draft a contract to engage Chatcom, IXP in the proposal they have provided to us and authorize the mayor to sign such contract.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ingram. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Sullivan. Any discussion about this proposal? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, the Chatcom proposal, or, or the city attorney is directed to prepare a contract with IXP regarding the Chatcom proposal that was submitted and authorizing the mayor to sign it. All right, moving on, that brings us to action item H, discussion and consideration of ICMA training for the interim city manager.
Yeah, so before you use a proposal, ICMA is the International City Council Managers Association, and it's for continued education for myself and to go to the annual conference.
Any questions for the city manager about the continuing education request that he's presented? Hearing none, then I'll make a motion to send the city manager Jamie Palmer to the ICMA Conference 2025, October 25th, 20 through 29th in Tamper, Florida, and adopt the expenses as proposed. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Sullivan. Any discussion?
I appreciate you continuing your education, not just through us, but through multiple channels that you've done in your spare time, we'll say. So, thank you very much. These are very needed trainings and certifications. Tampa's a nice place, but you know, you got things to do here too, so we appreciate you going and taking care of that.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that too, is, you know, Jamie looks young, but when he walks in a room with other city managers, it's amazing the attention that he draws. People, immediately, he has all their respect, and, and the moment he starts talking, they're like, that guy knows what he's talking about. So I appreciate his commitment to his education and continuing to learn and move forward, so I second that with the, the, with Mayor Proton. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, I, I, we already had the motion. I'll call a vote. All in favor? All opposed? All right, by a vote of five, the proposal for the ICMA conference for the city manager to attend is hereby adopted. All right, next up, we have a presentation for the city's merchandise vendor.
So, my name is Sean Dodson. I'm here with Don, and we are from Boss Populi. We are a print and marketing production company. We help brands grow through prints, apparel, and especially engraving. We are here tonight to talk about a portal for you guys. You're a new, new city. You guys are needing to brand your city, and you're going to brand your city. And it's important to take control of your branding. A lot of times, you know, if you give business cards or many tags, you might have several people ordering them, and they might not look cohesive, and then somebody leaves, and you don't know where they ordered the business cards. So you're scrambling to try to find who might be getting those or where they're getting them from. So we create portals to consolidate all your operational and marketing needs into one online secure portal, so you can log in and order anything anytime and fast delivery. I'm gonna talk about why you would want a portal, and go over some of the features, and then go through the merchandise designs that we've come up, just to show you, give you a couple ideas. So why a portal? Streamline your brand marketing experience by offering a single source solution for all your operational marketing needs with your own custom online portal. With this portal, we can brand this with your logo and everything you would want to put in it. You can start small, and you can start big. What we suggest you start small with a couple apparel items, some things for, you know, that you would give away. Also, you can put in your operational items. If you manage business cards, leather head, envelopes, things that you would order on an operational basis. It's an easy, one-click ordering system, and for like business cards, there's an online approval thing. Some of the features, so you can manage and order everything you need from one platform, including branded apparel banners, signage, business cards, door hangers, flyers, brochures, and more. And I would emphasize, so like, you guys have the city side, and then you have the merchandise side. The merchandise side would kind of be open to the public to go on your site and order things, but then you would have a secure side where city managers, anybody who would go in and order stuff could have, could be behind a secure login. Then you can put, create plugins for as many people as you want with manager approval, different approval ratings as well. You have live proofing for things such like business cards, so anybody can go in, make changes, or put it in. You don't need to wait for us to send you back approved, to approve it. It's all done live here. Once you place an order, it sends it, sends it to us, we print it within a day or two, and we turn it around, and you get your business cards. Again, fast turnarounds, we typically turn our process and order within 48 hours. We have five-day turnarounds on most apparel items. Most, most of the time, a lot of people ask this technical point for apparel. A lot of people take about two weeks sometimes to get apparel done. But we do all our stuff in-house, apparel embroidery, design, everything in-house. Inventory and waste reduction. So this is going to eliminate storage requirements, because a lot of times you would order like a bulk of things to get a good price in the store. Sometimes you don't give away or sell enough of those items, so you are sitting on inventory, you lose the inventory, or you just lose money. So this allows you to order on demand, and when you want it, and however many you want it. There's no minimums, no setup fees unless it's a different type of purchase for screen printing. But for us, interior ETF, a lot of those, there's no setup fee. One of the other features that some of our other users of our ports, portals use are employee programs and rewards. We can set up portions of the site to where somebody can come in with an award or a crystal award for a monthly thing, or a yearly thing, and you could fill it out online, and it would send us the order, and we could do that as well. So I, again, I want to go back to sort of the city part. Again, that's under a different part of the portal. This is more the merchandise portal, and we're just gonna show you some designs that we would put on this for. We do all the designs ourselves. We create and produce the product. We pop it at the website for you, and then if there's an order, we place it, and we send it out to, or whoever orders it. So we did some generic, basic designs first, using your color schemes. And you can order any of these at any size, any quantity, and there's no setup fee or any charge for that. Again, the design process, again, is, these are things we came up with, but you know, you have a voice, you have a, an identity. We would go over those things with you and complete the brand and designs that would, that would fit with your brand. And these are some of the, just your basic items for giveaways and stuff that, these are things that just go around and, you know, have your logos on it, put your logo on it, and carries your brand throughout the, this thing. Pause, we do all our embroidery in-house. And that's it for the, for that presentation, if you'd like. If I have time, I could walk you through a demonstration of an actual portal, if you would like to see that.
I think in just the interest of time, we can kind of move forward, and then we can just kind of discuss further later.
Okay, cool. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have two quick questions.
Sure.
When you say you guys do everything in-house, is that local around here, or where is it?
We are in Peachtree Forest.
Okay, gotcha. And then, do you guys serve other municipalities currently?
We do.
Well, so you serve
It's in Peachtree Forest. We have their official merch, their merchandise, or
Are you willing to move to Mulberry if we
Yeah, I live closer to you guys, and I do my job, so. If I can handle it, we'll give you some.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, and just to share too, I met with the owner, he was very receptive to having fun with the process as well. You saw like how he, I'm from Mulberry. I had mentioned to him, a lot of people don't seem to know they're in the city. And in one of his, was a playoff, the old car dealership that used to be Where's Loganville? You have like a little image of Mulberry instead of the star, and it wears Mulberry kind of thing. And I was like, okay. They can do design for us, we can do our own design, send them in, you know, obviously, I didn't meet you guys, but you know, our concern is all our stuff, we want it copyrighted, so that we don't have somebody going, oh, that's a nice shirt, I'm gonna copy it. And go run off with it, but, you know, like I said, we could supply stuff, we could meet with them, you know, designate somebody on, on staff to come up with some junk, maybe have some that say, I mean, I don't know that, where, how much we'd use internally. That would be like, if we decided instead of using business printing, we use, oh, guys, we could do all that sort of stuff with them. But, you know, we could also do, you know, some one-offs like councilman shirts and mayor shirts and things like that as well.
You can make challenge coins?
The cool thing is, we also give a report every month of like your, what you're spending and what you're doing. So it's a consolidated area for your finances.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Councilman Sullivan kind of beefy as a punch, he's been very instrumental in getting us off the ground, so he's very passionate about this, so thank you for the money.
Can we make these things?
Yes. We don't display, we'll make
We worked a lot of money there. City manager, is there any action to be taken, or is that just a discussion item?
No, once we get something together, then we can present it on a formal
Thank you, we appreciate that. All right, moving on to action item J, presentation of the HDL GMA revenue advantage proposal. Who could present this?
So, we have been presented with quotation from a company by the name of HDL. We are seeking their services with the collection of hotel motel excise taxes. And they've given us some preliminary information, which indicates that we have 60 short-term rental units within the vicinity of Mulberry. They project about half a million dollars in revenues coming from there. We had brief discussions with them. If we're interested, they will do a more in-depth study, and then give us a more accurate number of potential revenue on the table. Before they do any work of collections, they'll first work out whether the city is going to collect more money than what it's going to cost to collect it. So we are very interested in pursuing this. We think it's a great opportunity. If it works out well with them, they also provide other services. They do business licenses, registrations, administration, and they also do alcohol license administration.
Any questions for the presentation?
A half a million dollars.
That's the revenue, so it will be a percentage of that as per the ordinance.
That's the revenue from the, the short-term rentals currently?
So, 5% of
5% of that?
Correct.
Which is what?
25.
25,000?
Yeah. So we just need to make sure that it doesn't cost us more than 25,000 dollars to collect it.
And their, their pricing structure, is that just page two of this?
Correct.
Okay. And the second 40% contingency?
That's, that's in, that's for the business licenses.
Right, that's, that's a separate service.
Yeah, so this is just the pricing structure for the business licenses.
So this is just a general introduction to how, got it?
Correct.
And if we, are we set to approve this tonight?
No, this is just telling you about the opportunity. We will come back to you with the actual costing.
We're just asking for, to show you all this proposal and the ability to move forward negotiations and preparing a contract on the city attorney, if we do find and strike a deal. The main thing is, is that along, along with the hotel motel tax, we've been discussing the short-term rental ordinance. We would like to try to work out something to collect this data first for the hotel motel tax before we bring back the short-term rental ordinance to compare if it's feasible or not from a revenue standpoint, and if we need to modify how short-term rental ordinance looks.
Got it.
So this is for two purposes. One is to work on some of the outstanding tax revenue that for business licenses or other things of that nature, we want to look and explore that option with them, and talk with our planning staff on how that could coordinate. And then two, seeing the feasibility of short-term rental.
And these, these feasibility studies, they typically probably just do it as a function of winning business with municipalities, right?
The one to, the, the one that has to do with short-term rental is free because it's showing the feasibility of what it can do and how they can operate, how they collect data.
Gotcha.
So yes, it is free from that standpoint.
Is there another one that costs? Or, or right now, it's just more of just introducing
There was not, we did not discuss anything about a study that would cost as far as that.
Yeah, got you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, sir. All right, that brings us to action item N, and I will tell everybody who's here regarding this. So this is consideration of case numbers, C1C 2025.07.1257, which is an application for a changing condition and to amend the permitted uses for the property located at 2797 Hamilton Mill Road, Beaver, Georgia, 30519, being Gwinnett County Tax Parcel 1,001, 988, in Zone C2, General Business District, conditional. So the, the public hearing for this, even though this is under the public hearing cases, the actual public hearing for this will be held at the meeting on September the 11th at 6:30. So September the 11th, 2025, so there will be no public hearing tonight. The applicant will not speak. We will not take anyone in opposition of that application until that date. But the staff, this is the first read of this, so the staff's gonna present that to us right now. All right, thank you.
Thank you for that explanation. You took some of what I was gonna say.
Oh, sorry.
No, but it was a good explanation, and yeah, this is just kind of the staff presentation to you of this change in condition request. It is 2797 Hamilton Mill Road. You have a picture and aerial of the existing property, and then of the proposed site plan if the condition was amended. So just briefly, it's a 1.79 acre parcel. It is already zoned, general business C2. And when it was approved by Gwinnett County in 2002, there was a condition placed on it with the language which staff here has interpreted to limit it, to not include medical or the medical office uses. And so we've worked with the applicant for them to bring the request before you, which would be just to amend that language in the Gwinnett County ordinance. You know, in their proposal to us, they said they wanted, you know, this reads condition two, that second paragraph, the property shall be limited to retail and service commercial and accessory uses, and a self-storage facility as a special use. Use of a convenience store with or without fuel pumps shall be prohibited, and the use of restaurants to drive food shall be prohibited and the use of restaurants to drive food shall also be prohibited. They want to essentially clarify that service commercial would include dental or medical offices as one of those uses. Um, no other changes and this is not any sort of change in zoning or, or any other changes to the, the Gwinnett County approval from two thousand and two. Um, staff did recommend approval of this request when we did the analysis, we, uh, did it with three different conditions, just that the original conditions from Gwinnett County would remain in effect, um, that permitted dental and medical uses shall be limited to outpatient office-based practices and that there were certain prohibitive uses just that we felt as staff were maybe too intense for the site. At the planning commission meeting on the twenty-second of July, they also recommended approval, but they, they did make one modification, they, um, the applicants had asked that, uh, emergency medical centers and urgent care clinics, which staff had recommended approval or to prohibit on the property as condition three, they did ask that that be permitted. And so the planning commission in condition three, uh, removed those prohibitions, but they did put a, uh, hours of operation limitation on it of, of closing by nine PM for any sort of medical centers or urgent care clinics. Um, and as you stated earlier, Mayor, this is just the staff presentation and the public hearing will be held on September eleventh at six thirty PM, um, so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on the list.
Any questions for Ms. McQuaid's staff about this request?
Indeed, um, the first page, second page, where you show where there's a building at?
Mm-hmm.
Where is Hamilton Mill in that drawing?
It'd be at the, the bottom, so south, the lower end of the screen.
Yeah, yeah, um, where's the, uh, storage building?
Um, the storage building is behind it, so if you see here, the storage is being developed behind there, so it's that driveway there.
It's not on that?
No, it's not on that.
Okay. And I assume, uh, when they presented the original one, there were, there were renderings of what the buildings would look like. They were proposing two at the time, so we're changing that?
In the Gwinnett County proposal? So the, um, original proposal from Gwinnett County didn't make it site plan specific, um, and so what they are proposing right now is that, that single building, yes.
Okay, so how are you gonna get on the property?
There is, uh, there's a, a shared driveway coming off of that access easement, so there's a, an entryway there, it'd be off of the existing drive to the self-storage.
Well, it's, as, as I drive by it, that, that entryway of self-storage, well, maybe it's not, it looks like it's a limit of the property, I guess it could be.
Yeah, I think it's probably because there's another undeveloped parcel.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Any other questions for Ms. McQuaid?
I have a quick question, is, I know they, they referenced elevations in the, uh, in the original one with, I guess, Gwinnett, right?
Mm-hmm.
Did, did they have any elevations that they had considered?
No elevations were submitted with this application, really, I think they're just trying to get the uses determined, um, and then they would be, uh, have to be developed in accordance with the existing architectural standards that we have and then that Hamilton Mill overlay as well.
So, right, so the new architectural standards would apply and the overlay, so all the.
They're not requesting relief from many of those.
Gotcha. And the other question, this is just a more clarification for me, on the original, or actually on this particular amendment to change in conditions, it's got, on twenty-seven ninety-seven Hamilton Mill, the zoning case number's got five point zero five acres, I suspect that's because that's the entire entirety of the plot? So it's got five point oh five acres versus the one point seven nine, so I was trying to figure out what the, what that is.
If I had to assume it was that, it was a, was it a combined application with the rear with the storage? So, Gwinnett County's was with the rear parcel in the back, the self-storage, but we are not requesting an amendment to the self-storage parcel.
So one point seven nine is because it only applies to that?
Yeah.
Got it, got it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the intended uses for a single vent or multiple vendors?
Uh, I don't know that they've fully designed the building, but it could be for either, there's, there would be no restrictions on whether it was a single occupancy or, or multi offices.
Last question, if I may, and I, this is just more, this is being a little picky, but I'm just curious, can we go back a slide on, uh, in one more? Yeah, this, this one here, so I know we exclude, so, uh, staff recommended exclusion of emergency medicine and urgent care.
Mm-hmm.
Planning Commission recommended it with the stipulation of a nine PM.
Yeah, they didn't, uh, after the applicant presentation, they didn't have so much concern as staff did about either an urgent care or emergency medical, um, they felt like those uses, uh, would, could be appropriate for that site, but they just wanted to make sure that there was a, an hour limitation, so it wasn't a twenty-four hour operation.
Gotcha, and is there a, I don't know the answer to this question, on the surgical centers, dialysis centers, inpatient, those, are there hours of operations limits on those?
So that's what staff has recommended prohibit on the site and the applicant was okay with that.
Got it, got it.
So those would still be prohibited uses.
Yeah, I think that was, I think there was a little confusion, uh, it sounded more like they were pushing for a dock-in-the-box store, but they got confused and then they got started on the surgery centers and they said, well, anybody that's hurt real bad will go to the hospital, they won't go there, kind of thing, so, yeah, maybe when it comes up, we'll ask a few more clarifications about it.
But the objective from staff and planning commission was nine PM is kind of a cap, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, for those more intensive uses.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Ms. McQuaid, I have one request for you, if you don't mind, on these staff reports, can we get a line that says the, um, the district that it's in, and the, um, the council member? I think that would be helpful moving forward so we know exactly which district it is.
Yeah, we can add that to the first summary page there.
That'd be perfect, thank you.
Yeah, apologies about that.
No, it's okay, no problem, all right, um, I guess that's all we have for that, that will conclude the first read of case number C I C twenty twenty-five zero seven twelve fifty-seven, um, I understand that there's no need for an executive session this evening, so I will make a motion to remove, uh, the executive session from the agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, um, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor? All right, all opposed, all right, by a vote of five, executive session is hereby removed. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out tonight, I know it's a packed house, it's hot in here and we appreciate you guys sitting through with us, um, so we appreciate it, our next meeting is September the eleventh, like I said, um, we will be back on this day and we're gonna see you then. All right, at this time, I make the motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, uh, here pro temp, um, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote, all in favor? All right, we are hereby adjourned, thank you.